...hazards from erosion, coastal storm surge, flooding. We've developed a work group of representatives from the city, the borough, state, fish and wildlife agencies, non-governmental organizations, other local stakeholders. And we've done a lot of planning and working on kind of the beginnings of a lot of projects. So the efforts of the work group have included strategic planning for the restoration and conservation of wetlands for floodwater storage and fish and wildlife habitat, particularly in the lower Salmon Creek watershed. We've worked on several projects to improve culverts, both to alleviate flooding and to improve fish passage and habitat. Those include surveys, planning, design plans along Nash Road, Old Exit Glacier Road, and Second Avenue. Other projects that we've discussed are restoration of the Scheffler Creek watershed, basically from the ocean all the way up to the Seward Lagoon. So you guys are all familiar, I'm sure, with the beautiful bridge that we have over Scheffler Creek. That was a community project led by a bunch of, I think RBCA might have been one of the leads. And everybody loves the signage, the bridge. There were walkways for fish viewing that got put in place. So we also discussed education and outreach to visitors, maybe signs or cement has of leading the ship and railroad passengers through the harbor area to Scheffler Creek and the lagoon, up and along Second Avenue to First Lake. In past years, the Flood Board and the city have partnered to armor the waterfront to reduce erosion from coastal storms. And prior to the pandemic, planning and zoning on the Flood Board held many different work sessions about what to do with all the gravel that we have coming down our creeks. There were many ideas that were generated for beneficial uses, public and private partnerships, several work session topics of beach nourishment and improvements to the waterfront. So Nathan was around, and Mark, Bob, and Andy was with Community Development. Steven, were you on board yet? Those beach nourishment discussions? Awesome. So we've got some people who were there for kind of those initial discussions. With the passage of the Infrastructure Bill, communities have several different funding opportunities. There's a huge number of programs that are available. Last year, the work group led by Trout Unlimited applied for a NIFWh, a National Fisheries and Wildlife Foundation Coastal Resilience Fund grant to pull all these projects' plans together, do some prioritization, and advance the projects to address coastal hazards and impacts from climate change. That proposal last year was not funded, but the reviewers asked us to submit additional information for their second round of funding. And hopefully, we'll hear in the next couple of months if that was awarded. If awarded, that planning process will open opportunities to fund implementation of various different projects. So there would be a planning phase where we look at everything that needs to happen and look at what funding sources are out there and how we can apply for those as a work group. So tonight, we've got Jamie Lynn from Ktuchik. And she has been attending our monthly hazard mitigation planning meetings and brought another funding opportunity to the group this month. So again, a NIFWh, a National Fisheries Wildlife Foundation, has an America the Beautiful grant. And so we discussed several of these different project options with the hazard mitigation team and thought that a planning grant for waterfront coastal resilience and revitalization might be a good fit for the Chugatch tribal cohort, which Jamie is a part, to apply for a planning grant to address climate change and coastal resiliency. Andy Bacon has been appointed to the Flood Board, appointed as the Flood Board representative on the Coastal Resiliency Work Group. And I might encourage P&amp;Z to appoint a member as well, so you can attend some of those initial planning. And then what I might foresee in the future are additional work sessions and planning meetings where we really look at this project and how people can work together. So, let me share my screen. And I'm not going to go through slide by slide. I hope everybody has this on their pads. I think this might be the same picture we took of the waterfront several years ago that shows our very rocky beach. But before we really start talking about beaches, I want to talk to you guys about where the Flood Board is now on our sediment management and maintenance program. So you guys have heard me say probably numerous times that we don't have a flooding problem in Seward. We have...
A gravel problem.
Thank you, Andy Bacon. So the Flood Board has been really focusing our resources on what we do about all this sediment. And sediment management and maintenance of our creek channels has been a large focus these last three years. And what we've done about it is we've established five sites so far with ground control for pre- and post-project measurements and design plans for the excavation of stream bed loading from strategic locations. So right now, oftentimes, these are around a bridge, maybe upstream or downstream or both of a bridge. We have a couple of diversion embankments that keep floodwaters away from neighborhoods. So right now, we have five set. Lost Creek is in the Old Mill subdivision. Box Canyon Creek is above the Old Exit Glacier neighborhood. Quejack Creek is in Questa Woods. The Salmon Creek diversion berm is upstream of the Clear Creek confluence. Most people probably haven't seen that one. It protects the Clear Creek neighborhood from backing up during flood events. And then Sawmill Creek is out mile two of Nash Road Bridge and is our only ingress and egress for the Seward Marine Industrial Center and the state prison out there. We have a sixth site that we're setting up this winter. So that is number 15 on our response areas map. At the very top of Salmon Creek, we completed back in 2018 a revetment with the Army Corps of Engineers to armor one of the gravel embankments. And we've done survey and established ground controls. And then this winter, an engineer is planning, is doing design plans for the excavation of stream bed loading. And I'll show you a picture of it. It's been, it's been five years since any embankments has happened. We've had several large events, and there's probably six feet at least of gravel that's been loaded into the channel this year. We have four more sites that we're planning over the next few years. So Spruce Creek, which is Site 17 at the bottom, out in Lowell Point, will get ground control and design plans established during this next fiscal year. Our fiscal year starts July 1st. And then Japanese Creek, you guys probably heard something about. We did an Army Corps of Engineers feasibility study. We've collected new LiDAR data. And AWR engineering is currently completing flood hazard analyses and new mapping for the community of the alluvial fan, including Japanese Creek and Scheffler Creek. And there's one other small drainage that we'll get mapped. Once that's completed, we think we've got FEMA on the hook to reimburse us for the work that's been done for Japanese Creek and then provide funding for designing engineering analyses and construction-ready design plans for improvements to dig refer. Once that's been completed, we would anticipate Japanese Creek will also be a sediment management site. We can always hope for natural floodplain function with road crossings, but it might not be possible at that location, so more gravel to remove. We've got another site up at 16 on the Seward Highway. This is where Lost Creek comes down the west side of the Seward Highway and crosses underneath the railroad tracks and the highway. So that would be another site we'll be setting up, and then eventually Fourth of July Creek out in Schmick. So we have an invitation to bid that's being worked on currently. And the maintenance program should go out for award contract this year, with the idea being that this will be very similar to the roads maintenance contract. So all of our roads are maintained, the standard specifications. And with the sediment management and maintenance program, all of our creek channels and our gravel embankments will be maintained to those design specifications per the maintenance program. With the full implementation of the maintenance program, the Board has recommended to the Mayor a mill rate increase for FY '24, which starts July 1st. To give you a little perspective, the flood service area was voted into existence in 2003. So we've been here almost 20 years, and this would be the second tax increase in 20 years. So the Board very seriously looked at this, and I'm happy to let them talk about this if they would like. But they looked at how much material we've got coming down, what do we do with all the gravel? And based on the studies we've collected, there are over 100,000 cubic yards of material coming down the mountains to these maintenance sites, the ten I just described, annually. And that does not include Resurrection River or other locations where we don't do regular maintenance to help save infrastructure. So this is Box Canyon. There's a 2,800-foot-long gravel berm that in 2012 did a bog.
David Complifield event.
Thank you very much. Maybe that it completely disappeared and rolled into Old Exit Glacier. And all of this gravel and debris, sorry, ended up in the Old Exit Glacier neighborhood. Lost Creek in the Old Mill subdivision, this is looking upstream and downstream of the Forest River Bridge. The Forest River Bridge is in great need of replacement or relocation. We are working with the Road Service Area on that project. This is the Salmon Creek diversion berm here that keeps Clear Creek from experiencing backwater flooding during flood events. And then Quejack Creek is in Questa Woods, Bruno Road here. We do have a hazard mitigation grant that we believe is going to be funded this year to armor Bruno Road and install drainage benching throughout the neighborhood. Sawmill Creek, you guys are probably familiar with. This is mile two of Nash Road. There was actually some freeboard on these pictures, so by fall, we had around eight inches. And DOT went in and did an excavation during one or just after one of our events. The upper Salmon Creek revetment site, so if you look way up here, you can kind of see this is a two-step revetment. So the initial was, I think, about four feet tall on the crest, and then there's a second set of rocks that are about six feet tall. So when this project was completed, I could stand in the creek channel and look up at the rocks. That's this bench right here. So you can see how much sediment loading has occurred in the last five years. And this is a sixth maintenance site that we will be adding this year to excavate all of that material. A little bit sideways, just to kind of give you an idea. We've got our revetment, and then we'll be excavating down. This is kind of a suggested design plan. We actually end up with some very delightful design plans from the engineers we've been working with. Currently, we're working, like the city is, with the Alaska Railroad. You guys probably know about the Dock project that's coming up. So they're looking to stockpile as much material as they can. So we have established a memorandum of understanding with the Alaska Railroad, and we'll be working with them to excavate as much material as we can, hopefully from Japanese Creek in the next coming weeks. We'll see with all the snow load. But once Alaska Railroad has finished their project, again, what do we do with all this gravel? And so the discussion several years ago, we started talking about where beach nourishment, and I'm going to add a new phrase, is a living shoreline. So the beneficial uses of that gravel has been discussed with the Army Corps of Engineers during our feasibility study. We've talked to many different people about how we can make this happen, including back in our work sessions, we had engineers call in, we talked to the permitting agencies. We did a lot of groundwork back in those days. Nathan, feel free to jump in if there's anything you remember.
It's a long...
It's a long time ago. It is a really long time ago. So all of you know, I'm sure, that the majority of Seward was built on alluvial fans. So if you picture those beaches out at Fourth of July, Lowell Point, and then the Resurrection Rivers, Salmon Creek, Sawmill Delta, Lowell Canyon, where we're sitting, the alluvial fan is no longer being replenished like those beaches because of our beautiful tunnel and our waterfall through the mountain. And so it's prime for a beach nourishment opportunity, utilizing the material from Lowell Point and Japanese Creek. And one of the questions we asked during our feasibility study was of the Army Corps, is this material usable for beach nourishment? And the answer was, yeah, pretty much. It's the same material that would be coming out.
I have a quick question, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
What exactly constitutes beach nourishment, other than gravel and sediment, I guess?
It's a great question. If you hold on just a little bit, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah. Because it can look very different for different communities, and it's actually one of the things that I'd like you guys to consider and talk about tonight. So I'm not going to go through every slide here. These got sent out, and so hopefully, people have had a time to peruse them or have their pads that they can take a look at tonight. We all know that coastal beach systems are vile to people, wildlife, fish, plants. I don't think I need to harp on that. Beaches also provide natural protection. And that print is very small, so hopefully, you've got it up, you can read it if you'd like. But they provide protection against coastal storms by absorbing and dissipating energy. And beaches are very dynamic, and they change over time. We've all seen that. We've also probably seen the impacts from our coastal storms, especially during our winter months when we have very high tides. We've had some pretty good storm events that have happened in November and December. So there are many ways to protect the shoreline from all of these coastal events. There are non-structural solutions such as setbacks. So, you know, we have our waterfront campgrounds or tsunami inundations. In many communities like ours, we've used gray infrastructure to try and control the impacts of coastal storms. So these are revetments or seawalls, armoring roads and shorelines. But in recent years, there's been a real move towards nature-based solutions. The Flood Board did a work session last year about specifically nature-based solutions, and you guys can hear that online if you're interested. Green infrastructure, such as a living shoreline or beach nourishment, is becoming very popular for multiple reasons. So beach nourishment's a project where there's large volumes of fill or added from an outside source to restore an eroding shoreline, and then periodically re-nourished as erosion And we'll go over steps for kind of how we can accomplish that. It definitely needs a coastal engineer, and of course, part of that process is looking at the environmental impacts. This is a great handout. It kind of discusses these living shorelines. So again, there's nature-based solutions, structural measures, non-structural measures. And this big push, especially from the Army Corps and FEMA and other groups, NOAA, are looking at kind of a systems approach to geomorphic engineering. And what that means is that the approach integrates soft or green nature and nature-based measures with hard or gray structural to arrive at a landscape scale. So the stabilization solutions end up being a living shoreline, and they have multiple goals. So we'll be stabilizing the shoreline, reducing current rates of erosion and storm damage, providing ecosystem services such as habitat for the fish, other aquatic species, increasing flood storage capacity in some locations, and maintaining connections between the land and water ecosystems to enhance resiliency. So these living shorelines will use both, you know, maybe they will have gray infrastructure growings that go out to build some structure for the beach to settle and move on. And so that will be, you know, part of your question. It can have many different facets. And so you can see, we've got, you know, different wave heights coming in, different coastal surges, and there might be some gray infrastructure, vegetation, and then green swales up above. And this was very strangely cut off for some reason when this printed as a PDF. I think it's probably one of those of my sent to you, so I apologize. So vegetation on a dune, there could be a vegetation with some sort of edging. There's sills that, you know, provide some rock there with a little bit of vegetation. Beach nourishment only is just bringing in the gravel. Beach nourishment, vegetation on the dune, and then you've got the kind of the gray infrastructure such as breakwaters or growings. A revetment, bullpen, and a seawall. So that kind of gives you an idea, you know, from green all the way to gray, what can this look like? And a natural solution or a living shoreline, I think, is much more of what we were talking about a couple of years ago than let's build some more revetments. We have done revetments along the waterfront there, and it's just on a rock to keep the coast from continuing to erode. The Sea Life Center has, you know, breakwaters across the front of their structures there. So that gives you an example of the different variety of techniques. Does that answer your question?
It does. I was just sort of thinking about here, you know, how much has eroded over the years. I've been here, you know, since mid-'90s, and, you know, I've seen a lot of changes, whether it's at Lowell Point, just the stuff in town here, and, you know, the different areas where there's just been some significant erosion. And short of just putting a big old wall up, I don't know, because if you put the green, you know, solution there, so to speak, isn't that going to just get washed away? See what happens at the waterfall? And they have to bring the trucks in and, you know, move stuff around, and, you know, we, you have all that stuff out there. I don't know, you know, it's just me throwing it out there, just trying to get a feel for what's the best solution, because it seems to be so dynamic out there.
And it's a really good question. So looking at what are the benefits, gray versus green, or a combination of both, that really starts with kind of developing that vision of what the community wants our waterfront to look like. What do we want it to look like in five years or 10 years from now?
Can you grow a green enough that it just doesn't get washed away when we have some, you know, it's a lot of work, and then because of the tides and everything else like this, that wouldn't be likely to start?
Yeah, absolutely. And renourishment is usually part of a beach nourishment project. So you do that initial construction that may include some gray infrastructure. You bring in the beach fill, and it's going to move, and it's going to, the Army Corps, you know, did some pretty good examples on that previous, really looking like, what is it, you know, what changes occur when coast, when storms come in? And so, you know, you can see, you've got your beach nourishment program, and here's what our beach used to look like down here. And you'll see some erosion will start to occur, and then it starts to build up down here. And then you do a renourishment project where you fill in a little bit here, and it just starts to build itself up. And so it's going to change, absolutely. Are we going to lose some vegetation? Yes, very possibly. Are we going to need to reseed if we choose to do vegetated dunes? Yep, probably. So it's not just a one-and-done program. It's a sediment management, maintenance, beach nourishment program. We have a never-ending supply.
That's true.
And I think that's the beauty of the partnership projects, is you use the material you have on hand, and you replenish that beach as needed. So we might have a year where we don't have a huge storm event, and there's not a lot of erosion occurring. Maybe we don't need to place that next year. We have a really big event like we did in, what, 2017, that brought huge debris and just so much damage, and then you're going to need to do a bigger project the next year.
And that's all, a lot of that can be grant-funded from that initial funding that you referred to? Is that a long-term or is that an annual kind of thing?
Great question. So developing that vision of what you want your waterfront to look like is a big part of what I want to talk about tonight. And then funding sources. You would start off with a planning grant. So America the Beautiful might be a funding source to do that planning grant of this is what it looks like. And then there's data collection that needs to occur. So we don't have recent bathymetry, which is underwater ground elevations of Resurrection Bay. I think our latest bathymetry was 2011 is what they used in the tsunami inundation report. So having bathymetry collected, we have put in that request to the state GGS, the Geospatial Office, to let them know that we're interested in bathymetry of Resurrection Bay. There'll be surveys that need to happen on the ground, geotechnical investigations. RNEV has done quite a few geotech investigations, as well as the Army Corps. I think we'll be able to get some of that data for use. So once we have data collected, we kind of understand what that landscape looks like, what the waterfront looks like, both under, under the water and along the beach line. That's when you bring in a coastal or a hybrid geomorphic engineer team and look at design and engineering. And that'll be, they'll need to run models based on that elevation model underground and what coastal storm surges could look like. And they'll then determine what are some of the best options. We take a look at, you know, how much do things cost to help, you know, that initial nourishment program, is it going to be, you know, more of a gray infrastructure, or is it going to be more of this, you know, vegetation only? Are we going to look at sills? Are we going to look at growings coming out to help stabilize the sections of the beach? And nourishment, and vegetation, and edge, you know, there's, there's a lot of different things that that engineer will take a look at as they design the waterfront setting. Other things that we've talked about in our work session on nature-based solutions are things that could be implemented within the campground itself. So right now, we've got a big, wide, open campground with very little trees. Do we want to put in green swales to help with storm water capture or, you know, vegetate so we have more shade? Anytime you have those impermeable surfaces like we have on our, you know, our compacted gravel pads, water's just, you know, running off it. It's not soaking into anything. So that would be another thing to look at, is what do we want those campgrounds to look like? I know when we discussed it earlier, there was a lot of vision around, let's pull those fire pits back, and let's build walkways across the grass, the dunes, so people don't damage the vegetation that's there. So developing that vision of what, what you want the waterfront to look like is a key part of that. And then that coastal engineer will take a look at the data that's been collected and design that for you. And engineers will usually take you through to permitting, which would include that in. And engineers will usually take you through to permitting, which would include that environmental impact statement, permitting from the fisheries and DNR and Army Corps and everybody else that we learned about. And at that point in time, you've got design plans, you've got everything ready to go, and you apply for a second funding cycle for implementation of that construction project. So that would be the initial construction, and then you would combine sediment management with beach nourishment as one program that allows a never-ending supply of beach. So that's the thought. I'm going to pause there and let everybody else talk now. So think about, what do you see? What are your questions? What things do we need to know?
Yeah, this originally came to us from meetings with Tom Slade as the commissioner. He was the champion of this whole idea. And he was talking about basically the one that's to cut off, right? The beach nourishment only? I mean, that's just, we just take gravel and dump it on the beach and create a smoother beach rather than the large rocks and metal and concrete. That is an option, correct? I mean, that's a...
Absolutely.
Probably the least expensive and, you know...
I believe he envisioned some sort of deposits in the wintertime, and then, of course, the storms would then carry the sediment out.
Like that's a bad thing? No, I'm saying that's how the material would get distributed. Oh, yeah, right. I see. I want a beach and just let it walk, yeah.
Right, right. I don't know if that would in fact work. I mean, it's like making your bed every time, right? The material's going to be pulled out. But it is redeposited regularly.
We were first talking about it. We, the permitting wasn't all there. We were trying to figure out where we could put gravel and where we're allowed to do it. So the first idea that Tom and he had just laying it out in the upper tide area where we're allowed to dump it without, not dump it, but place it without permits for underwater. And then as those tides come in, they'll have access to that gravel and pull it back. The whole beach and where we live here is here because gravel was deposited. So now that we've stopped depositing that, eventually the beach will be taken back away. And, you know, I've, we've got to basically look at the engineer and see what would be the best thing to do, but we have all the gravel. So we're going to continuously need to replace that gravel back, otherwise we will lose the beach at some point. So if we can get a, you know, a plan through the engineers, which, depending on which breakwater or nourishment, which one's best, but ultimately, we will have to keep putting gravel, which is fine, because we have it in the gravel.
Seventeen September 19th is when we actually were discussing some of the concepts of actually taking some of the root balls and some of the fallen trees, you know, driftwood, if you would, and especially with this landslide that we had just a couple months ago, a few months ago, a year ago almost. We might have wooded root balls and things that can be put up. And then at the time, they were saying that the Jefferson gravel could be used without permit, and also that at that time, Japanese Creek material could be used. Is that still the case, or do we have to permit for that now?
So we always needed permits. The coastal velocity zone and the coastal AE zone has been designated by FEMA already. So there is permitting from the city of Seward required if you place it above the ordinary high watermark.
Is that a city permit?
That's a city permit. If you place it below the ordinary high watermark, then you get more agencies involved. So state DNR controls all waters mile out. Army Corps of Engineers controls discharge into US waters. Fishing game probably will want to say something about it. But that's, if you have a design plan and you can say, this is what we want to do, your engineer team will be able to push those permits through, and the city will write themselves a permit. So there was an initial, a thought of an initial test site, and part of the challenge was we had to turn over our staff, and it just didn't happen, and then we had COVID and blah, blah, blah. So we were looking at this kind of end of Jefferson area here for an initial test site to do what they can describe of depositing material during the wintertime so those coastal storms could pull it down. And part of the challenge there is that with, that's not a very good picture, with the earthquakes, or the 64 earthquake, a lot of this alluvial fan dropped off. So the... There we go. So there is structure to build some beach on, but the challenge is that that slope drops off pretty quickly once you get a certain point in different areas along the waterfront. And so having that bathymetry or that underwater elevation would allow an engineer to take a look at what else needs to be built to stabilize that waterfront and that beach. Because there are areas where, you know, by Shepherd Creek, we've got a nice, long, you know, beach area out here, and at low, low tide, you can see quite a ways out, and it's a nice gentle slope. That's what we want it to look like. I mean, think about Fourth of July beach and how during low tide it gets way up there. Well, that's because sediments are continually being deposited naturally by the alluvial function of Fourth of July Creek and the wave action at that location, so.
We don't get sediment down there is because we altered the natural flow of the water from down Lowell Canyon?
Yes, and now it's building a new alluvial fan.
We're building land outside that area right now.
Yeah, that's all that's stuck near the waterfall there.
We've got half a block being built right in front of the Sea Life Center, Marine Research Center.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
From my recollection, by the way, I agree with everybody else's recollections from the previous meetings. I wanted to add that if the last work session on this topic, there was an engineer from R and M attending at that meeting and sort of spoke to the idea of, you know, the initial idea of coming from a planning zone, he's like, oh, dump the gravel on the beach, and who cares where it goes? We need somewhere to put it, and in the meantime, we want a smoother beach for walking. And, well, that sounds good, you know, to me personally too, but the engineers are talking about a lot, but from their perspective, if they design a project, they want that gravel to stay put, you know, that kind of speak badly to their design if it got sucked right out. Oh, okay, so they had some ideas about, like what Stephanie was saying, about building up some structure like further out that could help retain some of that gravel, but maybe with the expectation that you're not going to like retain it all, some of it definitely will get, you know, pulled out past that. But, you know, the hope would be that, you know, it would start to like stabilize and kind of grow that beach a little better. With, in my opinion, I'll say that I'm very, very enthusiastic about this idea coming to fruition in some form. I would love to see, the, I think, like the long-term hope that I would have is just be to, you know, like just slow the rate of erosion there along the waterfront. Lastly, I just think the idea of that being the historical location of where all that gravel was deposited, just fits a really strong case to any agency to regulate this sort of thing in its favor, so.
One of my biggest things being on the flood board is we have 100,000 yards to get rid of every year, and we have no place to put it. We're lucky we have the railroad for maybe the next two years to three years, but after that, we have no place to put it. And if we don't start moving it out, that's one of the things we're really fighting to get as much comes down to move out. If we don't, we'll have more problems around town of flooding like we did in Burdenell, where it's going to bust up. The creek is right now six feet probably above the road. That, you know, which is ridiculous when it's like that. So that was one of the reasons we had planned to push for a mill rate, because we hadn't done it for the last 10 years, and we're looking at just doing maintenance. So our biggest thing is what to do with that 100,000 yards. And then we could be a lot more than that. We really probably should be 150, but we are looking to contract or a thing on maybe getting a grant to go back to 2012, which I don't remember how many yards that was to move out.
We figured that out as 700, something thousand.
So we have to figure out what to do with 700,000.
If funded.
If funded. So that's kind of what, I mean, to me, if we put 700,000 out there and lost all of it, but 100, who cares? We just got to get rid of it somehow legally.
Well, if I could say something, I'm a little worried about filling up the bottom of the bay. I realize it's pretty deep. The 64 earthquake already shallowed up that bay quite a bit. And if we keep putting like material out there and it washes down, eventually, over the generations, it could cause some tide issues in our area. Now, I know that the federal government is looking at three known sites on the west coast of Alaska for ports. They are now looking at a fourth site in south-central Alaska, and that's this location, Resurrection Bay, because of our railhead and it's most northern, deep-water, ice-free port. So there's a lot of things that work at a federal level right now. And I think if it's engineered, it should be engineered, much like how Andy has said, to where it doesn't erode as much as often as what we're looking at just by piling gravel out there. I brought up a thought before that, and I'm not an engineer, but if we put riprap out there, it's going to eventually roll away. We know this because of the storm surge and tidal action. So what can you do to keep that from working? One thought that I had was maybe some sheet piling, dug deep and very low in the low-tide area to create a shoe for that riprap to rest against. Now, if you need to, you can take some heavy-duty chain link wire and wrap that chain link and run it off with heavy-gauge duck bills that are one-inch thick cables and run that back to your shoreline. On top of that, you would have your tree trunks, rotwads facing out towards the bay, and you would anchor all that off, bring in your gravel, and we got it by mountains. And it's always going to be in supply around here. There's no shortage of that. After that, you can go ahead and plant your grasses, bring some sand in from the beach across the bay, build a boardwalk so, you know, when people walk over it, they don't damage it. There's a lot of good ideas, and putting something out there that's a near failsafe might be a little more costly in the beginning, but it would be a heck of a lot less maintenance cost to the city after the fact. And when we start looking at these things, we must look at the long-term budget. That's critical. You just can't be adding a cost on every year to an already costly situation, I think.
So I think that the advantages of having that engineer take a look at it eliminates us having to solve the problem, right? So the kind of hybrid geomorphic engineer modeling actually looks at, you know, when we place vegetation, how that stabilizes the dunes, or also looks at, you know, the aquatic life in the water, and how do we incorporate that in certain areas? In your Shepherd Creek, there might be habitat that could be restored or redeveloped. And having that expertise come in and we'll take a look at what we have and what we need and what the community wants this to look like, I think is really key to the planning process.
I thought of something else I'd like to say, if I may. I'm thinking back to, you know, those previous meetings and when I was working for the city of Seward, and like the idea was great, but like as an employee, like it felt really daunting to like take those first steps due to like the, mostly the permitting, and also not the challenge of not knowing, not having funding to pay the haul costs. Haul costs are like a really big deal, and, you know, the city has, you know, assets such as dump trucks and stuff, but those are primarily to be used for taking care of the roads and not, you know, driving around on rocky beaches, I suppose, right? So what I'm hearing tonight with this, you know, proposed framework of how we might proceed is, it's great. It's really, it's a lot more like straightforward. Well, I'm running on, but I really appreciate the work put into, you know, coming up with this proposal, because it seems a very good course of action, looking to take, you know?
Yeah, and I think it's an exciting opportunity.
Yeah, and that there's now like some, you know, funding channel available and stuff that was not in the past, and, yeah.
I'm just curious, if anyone knows, are there other coastal communities in Alaska that have the same issue and that have worked with engineers and done any of this kind of work?
I don't know anybody that has the flooding problem we have.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know the other, what was it, last year's storm that they had that took away a bunch of some of the beach, I don't remember where it was at now, but houses or beach, I mean, but Seward is the odd, I think, you know, and that's what we fight, is everybody on the other side, we're over there, they don't have flooding problems like we have. We're just the only ones. Anchorage has to a point, but they have the, the military has been dredging out in their area from...
Every 10 yards or so.
And I do think with all the coastal erosion that occurred during the storms last year, this is something that's being looked at by other communities. I don't know that it's been implemented to a large-scale extent. I think that, I want to say it was known, might have done one years ago, but as far as like the living shoreline idea, it's kind of a new, up-and-coming way of dealing with coastal erosion. And I think with this new round of funding, it's something that a lot more communities are going to be looking at and completing. It's done around the east coast all the time. Beach nourishment is a big part of the coastal erosion mitigation on the east coast, so.
Might be some guidance available?
There's lots of guidance available, and I'm happy to kind of plug people into like, hey, check out this website, and, you know, I think it's NOAA has a whole database of successful projects and what they've done. And I want to say in the last round of NIFW funding that there might have been one that included some nature-based solutions somewhere on the coast of Alaska, but I'd have to look back at that, but, you know.
Stephanie, do you recall, you mentioned a potential test location, how big or where that was?
Yeah, we were looking at...
Apparently, this is a scale that was what we wanted to be, and nothing, you know, creates success like success, so, I mean, if we did a test location and it worked, then you can, you know, just continue.
Yeah, like I said, I think the challenge was like, we were looking at Jefferson as a test location, and in order to deposit anywhere below ordinary high tide, which is basically that vegetation line you're seeing here, you need the full range of permitting, even if it's just, you know, 100 cubic yards. And so, and then the other challenge I think there is that, like we were talking about the slope, how it drops off. And so collecting that bathymetry, getting that design, looking at other ways we want to improve the waterfront and including that in the design, and then having that full construction project completed. And it may be that it's... And it may be that it's phased. So it may be that, you know, this stretch from our revendments that were completed a couple of years ago, we've got Armor Rock here. Maybe, you know, we do a phase from here to here. And then there's a second phase, you know, that occurs over time. So it might be a phased project where different sections have different slopes. It may not need as much beach nourishment. It may need more, you know, dunes created or more vegetation planted. So I think that, you know, looking at different sections of the beach is, is also what one of the engineers will look at and what each needs are for each of those sections.
And Long Sheffler Creek's out there, we should have some kind of a green area out there to help that vegetation in that area as well as a fish habitat.
Follow-up on Dwayne? Oh, so it seems like we get scared off every time we hear permit. And we had the Army Corps down. And they said it's nationwide permit available, which is easily gotten. So we just, it's not like this is hard to do to start a sample project or even going up here. It, we just need somebody to champion because it's not, it can't be our project. We can work with someone, but we don't, we don't control the beaches, the floodboards.
That's the ci, that's the city. So we need, we need the city and we can help in any way we can. We, you know, gotta, we gotta have our own best interest at heart here and let's get rid of all this gravel. So we'll work and do what we can, but somebody has to pick up the ball and carry it on behalf of the city.
And I think that's where partnership, potentially if the Two Gap Tribal Cohort are interested in applying for a grant with the different grant for the coastal residency planning, that was Tribe Unlimited. That, you know, we had a planning team that worked on the grant application together. But that's an NGO that came in and said, hey, how can we help? And so I think there's a, there's a broad base of people that are willing to help on projects like this that we need to tap into. It doesn't have to be our overworked staff that does all this work for us. And I think that's the beauty of those partnership projects is when you've got all the fisheries and you've got, you know, Tribe Unlimited and you've got Catch My Character Land Trust and you've got the Tribal Cohort and you've got, you know, the Fish and Wildlife Service and Fishing Game. And, you know, everybody has come to the table and said, let's make this into great projects together. Then it's not just one person or, you know, one entity that has to get that done, so.
I like the segments that you were talking about because I was thinking about based on that mapping capability where it was two thousand eleven was the last time you did it. And there are different depths, you know, based on the, I guess, the waterfront, for lack of a better term, that you'd probably have to approach differently based on what the terrain or the beachfront looks like to determine what is the best, you know, nourishment area or whatever, you know, terminology you want to use for it than to be able to bring it up. So if you use the test area, that might yield one area at Jefferson, that segment. But who knows down the beach and the other areas? So if the engineers have some sort of, you know, I don't know, they would do a whole area and then you could phase your, phase the project in a certain way. Then you'd have sort of a, a direction to go based on the baseline of what you're working with in terms of the waterfront. And then you could dump whatever rocks or, you know, sediment or whatever it is, you know, the hundred and fifty thousand or whatever you have a year into that area until you know where to distribute things.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that engineer design plan is the best way to go and should be done as soon as possible because, like you said, they're going to look at the whole waterfront and each section's going to need something else.
Yeah, it's all going to be a little different.
Realistically, we're not going to be getting anything done unless we have that plan.
That's the baseline.
We're not going to show anybody else what we, we need because we don't all know exactly what we need. You tell an engineer comes out and says, here's what you need in this area, and this area is different. And then from there, we can move forward permitting and implementation.
Is that a, that kind of engineering firm or is that a readily available kind of capability out there? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, R and M had a coastal engineer that called down to one of our meetings. And I think he's retired, but I'm sure they've hired somebody else. There, there are, you know, engineers that we would probably prefer somebody from Alaska that's familiar with Alaska waters and the challenges we have here. But I think that you'd be able to find an engineering team that did that work.
Maybe the Simpler studies, you said that a lot of this stuff is on the east coast. I mean, granted, Alaska is not the same thing as the east coast, but the steps utilization for, you know, things, like Myrtle Beach or some of those areas where things sort of go away, I don't know on the east coast. But at least you have something to look at those studies, decide would you want to go with that and apply those to this and then get the engineers?
Yep, and that's where that planning would go.
Yeah, we have to tackle it too on the permitting side of things, you know, just to follow up on what you were saying. I recall the Army Corps representative that attended one of these meetings. He's kind of saying that like, once you're permitted, the, it could be, you could have like a, like a maintenance permit. Like your permit can specify that for, you know, for ten years, you could dump X amount of gravel every year at this location. And if, we're talking about breaking it down into different locations that have different requirements. I mean, that could be a bunch of different locations where you could, you know, put this stuff. It's just that, yeah, they want, they want that engineering upfront.
Makes sense.
You know, makes sense.
How do we fund that? How, how, where do we go for the steps? Who takes that jump and figure out, you know, is it a city floodboard? Or how do we, you know, put the next step to going engineering? That's my question, yeah.
And that's where the grant application for a planning grant comes into play. And that's where working with your partners from other agencies comes into play, so. And like, one of the things that would make it very attractive is if we not only looked at the beachfront there, but let's look at the fishery that we have here. So Sheffler Creek goes all the way up, you know, into the little gill. Are there options there? And then does fish go all the way up Second Avenue to First Lake? Is there an option there to, when we look at that entire watershed and that fishery, to make that kind of mountain-to-sea route much more attractive for fish habitat? You know, we've got cohorts that are defunct across Second Avenue here. We've got design plans and we're just waiting on funding. And that's, that's part of that coastal residency work group is we need something here. The Rotary rebuilt this little pavilion here. Is there education and outreach piece that we can increase knowledge to the people that are coming off those cruise ships and off the train? Where we do, you know, like a walking tour to view salmon with educational science throughout town that can lead people to Sheffler Creek and then they can, you know, walk up to the, to the First Lakes and see these fish habitat. Second Avenue is a really challenging area for fish passage. You know, those driveway cohorts are tiny, they're really long. Maybe there's, maybe there's a vision there for how we could do, you know, driveway bridges and fish passage cohorts instead of tiny little, you know, cohorts that the fish have to struggle to get through. If you build it out as a broader vision, a more of a landscape vision, right now those funders are going to be looking at those projects to fund. So how do we take a look at all of that area? How do we take a look at some of our campgrounds? Is there a way to add in, you know, permeable surfaces? So it's not just packed hard gravel. Do we look at building up really large dunes and set back, you know, the, like the fire pits from the, from the waterfront? So all of that area is protected. You know, you'll have whole communities where they'll be like a tiny little fence or something. And then you've got a walkway to walk across the beach so you don't damage all those grasslands.
Well, yeah, we used to have a lot more years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So really building out that landscape of what that whole picture looks like is going to create a, a higher-scoring grant application, right? So you're much more likely to get funded if you really look at a landscape. Sorry, I guess. If you really look at that whole landscape and not just one little area.
Looking at a test site, would that require a lot of funding and engineering? Or could that just be permitting in a small enough scale where you wouldn't have to go through budgets?
Permitting city employees, yeah. You could, you could potentially do a test site.
You can always start it small and go however big you need to go in whatever section you're in.
But that would only be in the high water, but couldn't put any lower, right?
We have to do the full permitting for underwater.
Right.
So the trick there, it's like figuring out where that line is, mean-high high water. You're allowed to put stuff here, but not getting it over the line, let the wind and waves do that. That's okay, but.
How, how hard would it be to get, just a permit for you to do the low water without engineering and that kind of stuff? To do a test site, to do a test site?
The permits require float plane permitting from the city, Army Corps of Engineers, state V and R. I mean, it's, it's several different permit applications to several different agencies.
Because I'm going to pin you down. He said, how hard?
How hard?
Yeah.
There's a lot, there's a lot of staff resource.
Yeah, so how much? But, but we need to quantify that.
Yeah. Yeah, without, without a plan of what that would look like, I'm not sure. But I mean, you would have to develop the plan, write several grants or several permit applications to the various agencies, so.
My main concern is where you were at Sheffield or Creek.
Sheffler.
It would be great to do that as a test site over all those rocks, you know, that from, basically from the creek to the, the new harbor park there.
Test area?
Yeah, from there to there. It would be, you know, because that would be great for fishermen because it's all rock to there. You know, so that would be a great spot to target to test and then add, you know, greenery up on top.
I would respectfully disagree with that beach location being a place to put it because just offshore of that is a big eel grass bed. And I don't know, well, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily disagree, but I would just ask, what would that do, you know, to the eel grass bed right in there?
Would it grow up on it?
It's important habitat, maybe it would, yeah.
I mean, I, you know, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. So I would change, I don't respectfully disagree, but I would just.
No, it'd be just nice to cover up. I mean, we've got a lot of rock already in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To hold it in. There's a lot of rock already in there.
Sure, on that little hump where the cursor is and then right onto the other side of Sheffler Creek too. It's all like that.
If we're going to, if we're going to design a plan and do the permitting, that's essentially what the engineer is going to do, but the engineer is going to do it correctly. And have paperwork, so we go to get the permits, it'll be far smoother than us drawing up.
Well, this is, we're just doing a test area.
But you can find a test area.
Right.
If we start, if we get the plan done, then we can choose whichever area we want to be the test area.
True.
Because I don't know if I'm okay saying we need to do that there because I don't know exactly what needs to be done. And I know that the eel grass bed can have large gravel dumped on it. So I'm not an engineer and I think most importantly is having somebody that knows what needs to be done. And then we could choose from that plan where the test site would be and how big it would be based on the other resources.
My, my, my concern is grant-wise. How long is it going to take us to get a grant? Are we talking two years? Are we talking five years? You know, I mean, that's, I mean, you know, that's, that's my concern is how long are we want to delay this? You know, I haven't been here this long, but you guys done it, what, two years ago, year ago?
We talked about it, but it just kind of got stalled right there. We didn't actually do it again.
So to answer the grant question, most of the infrastructure grants will come out and you'll have two, three months to put in pre-proposals. They like what they read in their pre-proposal, they'll ask you to submit a full proposal. And they're awarded within that year. It doesn't usually take a full year to receive grant award, so it's not that long of a process. And then once that grant award is funded, then you put together a customer proposals to work with a, you know, design team.
But my concern is who's going to take that jump? Is that going to be the floodboard? Is that going to be the city? Or is it going to be a combination?
I'm actually hoping we might be able to encourage our local stakeholder groups to help us with that.
That's, that's all my concern is, you know? Unfortunately, we're losing somebody in our group that's been doing most of our good work for us.
And then kind, I want to go back to discussion Nathan and Andy were having, so that eel grass. So that's an example of the living shoreline, right? We've got a lot of plant and aquatic wildlife that's supported in that area. So expanding that living shoreline further out in the areas where we're not getting new sediment loading. So, you know, this whole area out here could potentially utilize that hybrid kind of geomorphic engineering to design that living shoreline. More eel grass means more fish, better fisheries means more fish running up Sheffler, you know? So just, we tend to focus in with the floodboard of what do we do with the gravel? But bringing in all of our local stakeholders, what else can we do with this? Looking at our campground areas, looking at our, you know, our aquatic resources out in front of the waterfront. Those would be questions you should be talking, you know, asking yourselves and thinking about with the planning process.
Might be a stretch with regard to coastal and beach nourishment, but we have to resurface our campgrounds frequently, right? The potholes a lot. Is any of that material, anything we would want to resurface with? Or is it too unpredictable or is that kind of an out there idea to? We could potentially, if yes, we could potentially get on it with, or flourishing, you know, resurfacing campgrounds with materials out there. I don't know that it's going to take that much out of the.
Yeah, that probably just requires sorting of material on site. It's a pretty simple process, right? I would ask the question of are there areas within our campground that we remove the impermeable surfaces and create grain swales? Where we have dirt and trees and vegetation growing?
Just out of curiosity, this is a late question. What have you been doing with the material up until now?
It's a great question. It becomes the ownership of the contractor that's been awarded the maintenance project or the maintenance project. So various things have happened with it. A lot of times it's being used on neighborhood properties.
If you want gravel, you can get a hold of them when they're going to.
Yeah.
They'll sell you gravel. So we didn't, last year at the year reported, we sent some of the, to dump. You know, so it just goes all over. The problem is we're running out of that source. And that's the biggest thing we have is, especially with the new program. Normally we were only all at forty, fifty.
Oh, not even that.
Now we're talking a lot.
And you're saying about a hundred, a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand yards a year?
Hundred thousand right now, but we should be a hundred and fifty.
As you're adding.
It's what we should be doing.
And our maintenance program for FY twenty-four will remove thirty-five to forty thousand cubic yards. And as we build out those sites, that number will get higher and higher.
I wish I could envision what that looks like. I, you know, I can't really begin to quantify that in my head. But I hope that this kind of maintenance program with the beach nourishment maintenance program cooperation would help knock that down, but I don't know.
Dwayne, can you, how much field did the railroad put in by the, in the area they filled up to the airport and the roundhouse?
So, yeah, I can, I can tell you monetarily, that was about a hundred thousand dollars worth of material. I know there was a truck count, but I can't recall right off the top of my head what that was.
It's like four dollars a yard, maybe? How much stuff at that time looked out of the law for?
For, at what year was that?
When they, when they had filled up that pond three years ago.
No, we're, we're talking, we're talking about the area that's across to the airport frontage road.
Yeah, yeah.
That we did.
Yeah, that was. Yeah, that was probably going closer to seventeen yard because it was being sold. Oh, was it filled with wall material?
Yes.
Yeah. So that haul.
So a hundred thousand, two thousand five eleven, might you do the number of yards? Ten thousand?
Well, yeah, it's, we got more gravel than just that. Just gravel's been piled around the area too for years and years and years. DNR's got several piles of forty thousand cubic yards all over the place. That goes back thirty, forty years. So there is a lot of gravel out there. Some we can get, some we might have to hand in please, but.
How much of the railroad can be stockpiled?
Oh, boy, I didn't have to talk to an engineer, but much material because we're not, we're not talking about one project. We're talking about two projects.
Yeah.
Doubling the size of the freight dock as well, so.
Yes.
Yeah. So we're looking at stockpiling and the coal, like much, a good portion of the coal laid down area. So anyway, it's gonna be.
I was just gonna say, if we had an idea, if you wanna do, is the railroad's gonna be piling it up by where the coal's at and you'll see what two hundred or three hundred looks like when they're done. And that's the good thing for us. We know we've got at least a year or two where we've got help in getting rid of, but it's after that is what we're looking at, is what we're gonna do with it.
So the snow dumps, I think, are probably ten yard, they're probably twelve yard trucks that haul ten yards. Looking at Chris.
Side dump side.
The dump, the snow dump trucks, the city snow dump are probably twelve yard beds that haul about ten cubic yards. You agree?
It's a football field sixty feet deep or twenty football fields, one yard, three feet deep. Go on, I don't, it's hard to visualize it, but.
No, that helps.
Yeah, football field sixty foot deep.
Open that door.
That's right.
Is that a?
Sorry to take us on.
Yeah. If I did the math right.
So I, I think our next steps are to see if our partners are interested in applying for a planning grant. If that's the case, I know that Ann, Nathan will be reviewing a grant application. I would love to see someone from Planning and Zoning who might be interested in kinda joining that work group, maybe as a representative of P&amp;Z so you guys can keep informed and maybe not have to use the entire group for discussions. And if the, if the Coastal Residencies fund gets funded in the coming months, there will be a planning process that will not be this project specific, but this is one of the projects that would be included in that prioritization process. If our partners do want to apply for another funding source for a planning grant specific to this landscape, beach nourishment, planning process, then we'll look forward.
Is there sort of a price tag around that? You know, I have no idea what that kind of stuff costs, you know?
Planning are usually two hundred, six hundred thousand dollar grants in between there depending on what you're looking at doing.
So something as extensive as what we're looking at, that would be a bunch more, I'm guessing? Or is it just?
Yeah.
It would be impressive.
I'm sure. I'm just trying to wrap my head around a little bit, so.
Yeah, the, the design and engineering and the data collection are those two big pieces of that.
Yeah.
And then oftentimes with grants, you can use in-kind matches. So if anybody serves on the committee, on the planning team, then their hourly rate goes toward an in-kind match. And some brands will have, like, you need to have a certain percentage of match either through cash or through AIPAC services. People's time at that point. Another way to do in-kind match is our land ownership. So this is all city sewer property. So that would be another in-kind match to the plans.
Anything from online?
This is all very exciting and I'm very enthusiastic about this because I'm like, during my short period on the board, it has become evident that we really need to expand the sediment removal, the, the project. And it's also clear that we don't have any place to put the, put the sediment. This would be a wonderful solution. And yes, improving the habitat and the, the green belts for the city and expanding the fisheries and all the things that we've talked about are, are very exciting. And so I hope we can come together and, and pull, pull this through.
Anybody else online?
Cindy? Yeah, Cindy. I put, sorry, I came to the meeting late. The Sewer Climb Service Area was having a meeting at the same time. In theirs was a meeting, meeting, and I had a couple of topics on there. But while I was on the Sewer Planning and Zoning Commission, we discussed this with the sort of very required service area on how we could use low point gravel since it was so close by. I don't know how many years that was ago, but it's really exciting to see this discussion, hopefully, applications going forward. And let's tap into Stephanie as much as we possibly can before she departs. So glad to see Andy on that grant application committee and hopefully somebody from the Sewer Climb and Zoning Commission joins him. And this, this would be just so awesome to use the excess of all of that sediment that we constantly find us ourselves with to do something that benefits the whole community. Of course, the tourism and the visit fishers, the fishers and tourism will benefit, but all the rest of the year we'll just be able to enjoy that, like, about more beach line and hopefully more green space and seagrass and eel grass. And I'm, I'm excited about it. Thanks for having this work session.
All right. Any additional comments, questions, thoughts?
I think if we actually go forward with this in a proper manner, in sections, have the engineer figure it out. What I described is probably for a high-impact area like at the mill. I think it would be something that would make sewer stand out even more favorably with our visitors. And knowing that this city operates on tourism quite heavily, because we sure don't have the economy we had before the sixty-four quake, we need to do as much as we can to improve our base with tourism as much as we can. That's within reason. And I think this beach nourishment policy or program, if you wanna call it, is an excellent way to step forward on it.
I think also going, you know, dovetailing with that, I think not only is it good for the tourists, it's good for us. You know, that whole front, you know, it just, it provides a nice, you know, natural home to the community in some respects because right now it's just sort of like this, you know, you know, a little more desolate than it ever used to be. You know, and I remember the grasses, I remember a lot of the things that are going on, you know. You know, my husband was here in the sixties, so he was, he remembers a little bit as a kid on a lot of the stuff here and the things that were around here. And it's just so much, you know, if we could provide that, you know, green space, a green belt, whatever the correct term of the thing is, you know, to be able to do that and just bring back what we had, you know, even just twenty-five, thirty years ago, it'd be awfully nice. How do we start? Where does it, where is the, you know, you always say, I mean, not a hedge, but what's the, what's the one, the hardship? That's my question.
I'll probably follow up with an email tomorrow to our partner agencies to see if they wanna work on a proposal.
Because I, I think generally speaking, I mean, I'm interested, I know Nathaniel's interested. I, I would venture to guess the rest of our commissioners are head nuts. And so I, and I believe the other ones who aren't here are probably of like mine. So I think we'd probably be in good shape. But, you know, we're just gonna dump everything on Jason anyway, so it doesn't matter. No, but seriously, it would be so nice to be able to get that going and try to resurrect, you know, and help, you know, the, the whole landscape out there. Plus the erosion portion of that is a concern.
Yeah, I think it's an exciting one.
All right. Anybody else? Just thank you for all of your hard work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hopefully we can come up with some solutions for you. You have a post comment?
Sure. I know you guys were talking about, geez, should we really do this? This is artificially changing your beach structure. Something to think about is that if we weren't here, all the gravel that you're talking about, whether it's coming from Resurrection River, Jap Creek, Lowell Tunnel, all of that gravel would be flowing into Resurrection Bay.
Yeah.
So what, you know, to worry about filling Resurrection Bay and, I don't know, I don't think you should, I don't think that should really be a, a concern because it's, we're, we're trying to actually fix what we've broken by putting city here. And one other thing is you asked, you know, kinda why, why are we having this problem? Why are we so unique here? And that's because our, you know, we have so many glaciers around and they're all receding, exposing more rock. Like Stephanie, you talked, you talked, you've told me this one, you taught me this one. And it's that rock that's receding and it's exposed that's falling down into the rivers and then flowing out. And that's why it's become a big problem is because of the glaciers going back.
To the climate change.
Yeah. Which gives you leverage with all of that grant money because this is a climate change. That's it.
Wonderful question. Do we have to pay for that gravel? So some of the, the borough owns the gravel, the state owns the gravel?
It depends on where we get it from, where it comes from.
Because they wanna get rid of it and we need it. So, you know, is it just a supply and demand or is it, you know, if they wanna get rid of it, why don't they just help us out as opposed to charging for it? I mean, it's probably a nice question.
We don't wanna take out of a manageable river area.
So it depends on where it's coming from.
Okay.
Japanese Creek upstream, the state owned DNR land. And we worked very hard on receiving a sediment management plan and the TRO sales contract from DNR so we don't have to pay for that. So we pay a fifty cents a cubic yard as opposed to a three dollar twenty-five cents a one based on the market value. So that was a fight many years ago. And we actually had the first sediment management plan in the state that allows us to trade in materials.
I think, I think we should somehow figure out how we can charge them for hauling their gravel away.
I think we should, I think we should, DNR, for storage of their gravel piles that, oh, it's temporary and they've left here for thirty years.
That must toll over.
Another site in the city that is a, is a perennial problem, there's the Lowell Creek gravel that comes out of the waterfall. Is that subject to the sales fee or is it free?
Is it?
It's not.
That's, it's not nappable?
Well, it's not nappable, but it's, it's pouring onto city property.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it comes from state on the city.
Okay.
And because it's been deposited on the city, it becomes city.
City.
That's, that's free.
Just like on Japanese, I think it comes from city to private, to state, to university, you know. So it depends where you get it from. Land is the answer.
And that's, and that's really nice beach gravel. That's the sand.
It is, yes.
And, just like you said, they could use that for that, but there's a cost to haul it. It's hard.
Yeah, that's just funded to haul.
That's been our biggest thing is hauling it.
That's why you get a grant to do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
To do that for you.
But that's, you know, like for us to keep the streams cleaned up, I mean, that's why we're looking at, we're looking at, how much this year to, to do our maintenance?
Three hundred and sixteen thousand for three projects.
So that's what we're looking at. That's three projects. So, I mean, we're looking in the future a half million, four more.
But if you've got, got a project, you need gravel, we got it. Plenty of it.
So that, and that's why we're trying to figure out how to, what we can do to do to get this moving, any grant we can, you know. Hopefully we get the grant to put us back from twenty twelve, but that's still, that still doesn't even really where we should be.
Where we should be is post, is pre nineteen eighty-six flood event. That's, that's the one we should really shoot for, but that's my, the sky goal at this time.
And the Borough on behalf of the Flood Service Area did submit both state and federal project priority lists that include sediment management, basically. So we'll be talking to our legislatures about that. Do you know any that put in a flood for flood mitigation? Because there's several projects that are needed including sediment management.
Looked on a priority list for the borough as well. That's sort of dovetails what we're trying to, so we're supporting the borough priority list.
It's important we have the legislature behind this.
All right. I'm gonna call it seven thirty, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody wants to pick a bucket or two and I'll pick some time, go for it.
We should have brought something.
I'm Jason. I've seen you around before. Jason, I'm two.
So I'm meeting with Andy next Monday if you'd like to join us.
Uh, yeah, tonight I moved up, stole up a two cabin.